Okay.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the fourteen board. And we welcome everyone. Can we have the roll call, please?
All right, sorry. So.
Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
Oh.
I'm here. Tish Campbell. Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Pip Clues. Brian French.
Here.
Lee Hudson. Byron Mattow. Carrie Nolte.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Lisa's on Zoom, I believe. Lisa?
I see her. There we go.
Here, but.
Lisa, you're real, I, you're just to just to head up, I know we had a little bit of challenge the other night. Uh, on volume, you're really chopped. So we know that you're there, we heard some audio, it didn't. It wasn't understandable.
That's what she said she'd be on her way back.
Oh, well. Hunter, maybe she's in a dead zone. Okay. Now, we have four people present, one person on Zoom. We are setting our goals. So I guess we can proceed and vote on the goals at the end of this meeting. Or if we need five members present to vote, we can set the goals tonight and vote on them at our next meeting. So we have to have five people present to vote.
It would be, I think. Independent of. I mean, you got, you have a forum. Okay, great, and Lisa too, so, but I still think it would be good since you have missing members. It'd be good to.
Good luck.
Potentially.
See you free.
And we, we're also, we can. Okay, all right, can everyone, can we pledge allegiance to the.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we will now open it up to public comment, we have. Petra who did here, who would like to speak, Petra, you know, the rules, the name and address in three minutes.
Hey, Petra Hootit, Portsmouth. Uh, I'd like to discuss the occurrences of last night. And I guess call to your attention. Um, a couple of facts that happened. I, along with your esteemed chair, was at the meeting last night. To basically speak in favor of. Your admin code changes. And to my shock, uh, when I sat down by, by Nancy, um, she had not seen what was in the packet. So what was in the packet was, uh, at your meeting for August twelfth, you, um. Made a statement on the admin code, uh, changes that were going to go in there. And, uh. This was in the city manager comments, and it was, uh. An amendment that was proposed by you was not recommended. So, uh, I explained to Nancy what was on here and what was, what was actually going on. And for those of you who haven't read it, uh, the amendment, uh. Proposed by the school board is not recommended, the legal department in consultation with the deputy city manager of finance. And, and CIO recommends following improvements to charter. Delete the last sentence which reads, all technology acquisitions must receive prior approval from informational technology department. Uh, in addition to finance department. I, I was asking because I thought this was, uh, a favorable. Favorable outcome for what you were asking. Uh, the next one was replace the second sentence with, of the proposed language with the CIO has authority to establish. Ensure compliance with IT standards for cybersecurity, system resilience and operation efficiency. I don't think anybody has any questions about that, and I think it was understood in discussions that I attended. Um, that everybody is very concerned about cybersecurity and the rest of the stuff. The problem that arose here, um. The next sentence says, uh. Attached is a revised version of chapter one, uh, changes should. Changes, should the city council elect to support these minor changes, the superintendent of schools has been advised of this recommendation. So, um. During. The, uh, beginning of the meeting, um, the, one of the deputy city managers came over or, and, uh, actually gave Nancy the printout. So that was the first time she had seen that. So to me, that was very upsetting. Um, and then it came to pass during the, during the conversations that the, uh. All of the changes that were in here were given to the superintendent. And, um, the deputy city attorney said today, later on in the day. So, but when Nancy got up and said that nobody had seen this and she had not reviewed this with her board. My assumption logically would be that there would be an opportunity to come back to you on the board and say. Does this, you know, does this work? Obviously, it, it. Obviously, it would have, the, the problem is, the process did not occur. For the governing body of the school to look at something that was being changed for them. And that's my problem. So between that and, uh, I don't know if, uh, if you had a chance to. I spoke last night and some of the things that I brought up. And one of them that is, uh, very concerning, uh, is actually in our charter. And our charter, uh, the letter that came from. Uh, city attorney Morel going through all of this, um, a lot of it I didn't understand, I did a lot of research, I could not find. The conclusion that she came to. The first thing that was in there that was a little upsetting to me was she noted, uh, section three point nine municipal administrative plan. But the problem was, she skipped the first most important sentence in this. Was except for charter departments. The administrative plan of the city, of course, shall be established by, and, uh, by the administrative code, which is what we're discussing here. So, to me, that just knocks. The charter departments, which are fire, school and police, right out of here, they, it, it shouldn't be interfered with. You have to apply the state laws. For, for education, it's one eighty-nine, I'm sure you all know that. And, um, there is a very, um. Distinct description about what the duties of the, uh, elected school boards are. Plus, um, how it relates to HR and IT. So, um, that was, that was my, um, my comments from last night, and I had actually gone up there and said. Please wait till you do this. The other thing I want to.
Petra, we've passed three minutes.
Okay, just a quickie, I just want to say, um. I looked at what was in the Herald today and the school board bashing, these are stuff. And, uh, I was very upset by, um, some of the things that were said by various counselors. So I am here to, um, support you and I understand what your position is and your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else, and do we have someone on Zoom? That would like to speak? Not hearing. Thank you, we appreciate it.
We have somebody, we have Esther Kennedy on Zoom.
Okay, Esther, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, um. I just want to encourage you all, I felt what was happening at the city council. Um, was wrong in many ways. I feel that there is a power struggle and I feel the RSAs are behind you all. I think that what other thing that upset me was. What they were saying in the paper, that it's a school's responsibility to provide after school. And before school programming, and I think you all know that's not accurate. Um, it's nice to be part of it if you can. But I do hope that you, um, remind the city that that is a luxury. And that maybe the city would like to take that on as a luxury. But I don't want you to upset. Because of that. So I just wanted to point those two things out, and I hope that. You stand firm on the RSAs for the rest of the schools out there. I have a feeling that you decided to go to the attorney general. And present your case, you would win in a heartbeat because I can't afford to have other school districts, um, beam and. People, um, that don't fall with, under the RSAs. So I encourage you to, to, uh, stay the track, and I want to thank. Your chairman Nancy for going last night, I thought she did a nice job. And I feel bad for you all that you got caught off guard and you didn't know what was going on. And I, I am pleased that Trevor admitted that he didn't give the information to you early enough. However, I think it was a bad move on the city's part. So I'm just, um, calling you an encouragement as a fellow administrator. To, uh, make sure that you stand your ground. And do what's right for our kids and what's right for the future of the school board, to make sure that you still have the power to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Okay. Don't have any of more public comments, thanks.
That's it on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Patty.
I just want to make sure, we usually don't respond to public comment, and the only, I just want to clarify one thing, so, because as we are. We're trying to work through kind of what happened in budget and kind of this conversation. We're going through some challenging dialogues with kind of city council in terms of our relationship with city council, so I want to be, I want to make sure that. As fair as I can be in making sure that laying out stuff. Uh, I, you know, the, uh, Trevor McCourt did have contact with me the tail end of the week. To let me know that, that, that this language was potentially going to be. But we weren't going to be in a position to have, to have a meeting for you to see. What was this language going to look like, so it wasn't, um. It was not something you, you could, you know, you couldn't send emails around on the weekend and say, oh, I think this is good, or it's bad. So just, just in terms of, so there was some contact with my office, I'll make sure that's, was some contact. Not enough time for us to take official, official action, have official conversation. Um, and right as of right now, the third reading. Typically is not one that has any changes that will happen at it. Um, is set to occur the day before your next official work. So, all things, um, to consider, I appreciate consent, so, both, when he was called, so. Not situation.
So what I would like to do is schedule a special meeting. I apologize for having to schedule another special meeting. The city council meeting is September eighth. Our meeting is September ninth, so we need to schedule something, say, the week before that to discuss whether we want to accept what the city has proposed. Or whether we want to go with what our paragraph was, that was, there was a similar before you, so. Discuss that at the end of the meeting, we'll try to work out a date that we can all get together. After, after Labor Day, I guess, right after Labor Day. So we can all have maybe the last week of August to relax and enjoy vacation, although kids will go back to school. But, um, if we could do it after Labor Day, I think that would.
Might be, might be too late, though. If we want them to have time, then. Yeah.
Yeah, I got, do you want to hold discussion for this, or do you want to open it now? We can't because it's not on the agenda. This all happened last night, and to put an item on the agenda, you need to post it for twenty-four hours. Didn't count that twenty-four hours, so that's why we have to have a special meeting to talk about this. Unfortunately. Well, we'll work that out. While we leave here tonight. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we will go on to the business of setting up school board goals and superintendent goals. Now, we did hear from several members. Um. Do you want to start with what, I guess we should start with board goals, since that's the first one on the agenda. Um. Does any, should we open it up to the people that are here first, and then we'll go to what we have on. Um. On, on the webpage. What do you think? Page. Okay, okay, well, um, Lisa had two suggestions. Uh, for board goals. The first one is community engagement. The second one is better agenda planning. Tish had a couple of suggestions, create working relationship with the city council. And, um, more better information of school events. Lee had ADA compliance. And Byron had create a working relationship with the city council, so we got that twice. Um, do, uh, work on special education and out of district costs. And then he said, had Google Calendar, uh, I guess, a better, uh, documentation of us and what's going on. By Google Calendar, is that what he meant by that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Putting all our meetings on. Uh, Google Calendar without some buttons. It's C N.
Okay. So, do we want to start with, um. Uh, two of the, um, two people responded to create working relationship with city council, do we want to start with that goal? That's a board goal. Do we want to make that a board goal?
I do, well, I just didn't put it in because I already saw it there.
You already, okay, so that's a third person that we want that, then. Okay.
I guess, I guess I would just add, um. Um. I, I feel like there's an add to that of like, to ensure compliance with school board. Regulation. Um, like a, an underlying goal around that, because I think that's, um, part of our experience the last few months has been. Um. I guess maintaining the authority of the school board. Think that's where all of our questions have come up, um. Although I think I was hopeful that some of our working sessions would result in greater understanding, um. Being as they've been ineffective, um. I think it's less about collegiality and more about, um. Coming to a shared understanding of the rules governing the school board and. Um, the rationale for autonomy over certain elements.
Okay, so how would you say that?
Prefer way.
Workshop in on my.
Okay.
We're, so create working relationship with city council.
That was a suggestion.
Well, underneath that, I think is, you know. And. Put on a super bad goal for. Budget, but I think it should be our goal as well, work with, working with, um. City council, so it's maybe sent under the umbrella of a better relationship with city council. Having more touch points, trying to work away and getting more touch points. Such like around budget.
Um, now we talked about, after we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, the non-fellowing meeting, and. We thanked them for letting us sit down and talk to them. Everybody here was there, um, and we talked about how we would like to do that again, so should, do you think we should put that in the goal that we would like to meet? With the school, with the city council six times a year or four times a year or, um, you know. Should we try to, um, pinpoint that?
I think you can't totally control that. You know, it's two-party, it's a two-party thing. Um, also, by the way, Lisa, it's going to be very soon.
Okay.
Um, it's a two-party thing, so maybe. I wouldn't necessarily set goals you can't control, so if you, if the goal comes back to. We want a better working relationship with, uh, city council. Um, that's good. Something, it's hearing in Carrie's thing, and maybe Carrie wrong in terms of the kind of workshop being, but it's, I think there's some questions about. Some responsibilities under the, some of it's something like law, like how, what are the, there's some structural things that are not totally. Clear right now in terms of mutual understanding. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but. Trying to get at what you're getting at.
Yeah, I think that's. Um. Yeah, I'm still writing, sorry.
So if, perhaps that, the, um. Letterhead should be to create a working relationship with the city council. One, to work effectively with the school budget. Two, to. Be periodically throughout the year. To provide better communication.
Again, thought when I words.
Okay. Periodically. I think that was a, I, I, I thought that was a productive session that we had. You weren't there, you were on vacation.
We're producing.
Um, broke the year. Okay. Carrie, you're working on yours. Um, and then remember, we have the finance committee, which is hopefully working on the budget, um. Aspects with Brian, um.
Yes, starting discussions around this September.
Okay, so should we put that went to work with the budget? Through our finance committee? With, with, yeah, why don't we say that? Because that's where it's. Oh, okay, good. Guys, over finance.
Again, we, we have that of that. It's, be to hear, discuss, it's not really important. Swam.
Okay. Okay, so work. Work through the budget with the guidance from the finance. Meet periodically throughout the year with the city council. Do we need anything else under that one to create a working relationship with the city council, does anybody, uh, Carrie's worked on something? Does anybody else have a? You know, we have A, B, C, D, you know, do we need anything else?
Still too wordy, but I think this is more the overarching goal, not the, not a simple. Just wordsmithing of that, um. But collaborate, when I say it out loud, I always find there, something. Collaborate with city council and administration to improve city and school board relations that maintain school board autonomy and compliance with state school board regulation.
I like that, how would you say state law and regulations? State law and school board regulations? Child.
Might be as simple as this role, understand all some responsibilities. I know you want, I know you want to.
Say that again. Collaborate with the city council and administration to improve city and school board relations. That maintains school board autonomy and compliance with state law. The big thing is school board what? Autonomy. In compliance with state law. Does everybody like that?
I'll sit in a line, so moving over here, so we have a little bit of a. Balance, we're looking, looking down the line.
So it's, so that, that the headline would be to collaborate with the city council and administration to improve city and school board relations. That maintains school board autonomy and compliance with state law, so that would be the. The topic. They'll say to work with budget, thank you, Carrie, to work with, to work on the budget with guidance from the finance committee. And the second. Thing would be to meet periodically throughout the year to communicate with the city council. How does that all sound to everybody? Three? Oh, good, okay, good. All right, is that enough for that goal, do you think?
Lisa, like you're trying to get in.
Lisa? Not there. But you said she's on her way?
She said she was on her way, hoping to be at city hall school.
Okay. Well, let's move on, and then we can review it when she comes. Is that enough for that goal? Do you want me to repeat it, what I have? The title of it is collaborate with city council and administration to improve city and school board relations that maintain school board autonomy and compliance with state law. And then under that will be to work with the budget with the guidance of the school board finance committee. And then to meet periodically throughout the year to communicate with the city council. That's not the best. Uh. I mean, it doesn't, some of it's not grammatically correct, but we, uh, we can clean it up.
Yeah.
Okay. Does everybody like that?
So, so in that with the budget, so you got like the city council stuff, and then the budget piece, I wonder. Uh, so is the goal? Because it, it ends up talking about finance committee, is it really, is the, the goal is that we, we want to have. Are you, we, whatever, want to have a, uh, more collaborative bu- budget process. Or we want to feel better about the budget process this time around, no, we did last time around. And so, so part of that could, is going to be partially the finance committee?
I want to put the burden on the finance committee to say.
Hmm, gotcha.
I, I, I think, I hear what you're saying, I agree, I mean, yeah, I think the finance committee, but, but.
I'd leave it more open-ended, because there's a whole bunch of different pieces moving parts to that. Um. Finance committee will have a role, I think, in that, but it's not the whole.
It starts with them.
Yeah. But, but I know the, the city is, you know, last year at the end, the city was like, we definitely want to, say, staff was definitely, and then, and the council was like, we would definitely want to start earlier next year. We want to have more conversation, and so that, some of that could happen through the finance committee, that happened through other, other routes as well.
And finance committee, correct me, Brian, will report to the board, correct?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so do you think we're finished with that goal, or can anybody think of another subset they want to put on that?
So I, I just, I want to make one comment, which is, I, I think there is, there's a fine line between.
Issues, yeah.
Between collaborating with them on bottom line as opposed to, and I don't want to cross over that. That line item approach, right, so I don't want to end up in a scenario where we're. Doing the opposite we expect, which is doing way, a forty.
So would you reword that somehow?
I don't know, I need to think about it.
Okay. Okay. Lisa, we're talking about the first school board goal. Is to collaborate with the city council and administration to improve city and school board relations. That maintain school board autonomy and compliance with state law, that's the goal. Number one thing we want to do under that title is to work with budget. With the guidance of the school board finance committee, to work on the budget with the guidance of the school board finance committee. And the second subset of that is to meet periodically throughout the year to communicate with the city council. Meet periodically throughout the year with the city.
With the city council.
We don't need, okay, with the city council.
Like the first one should, should say city council, talking to somebody there. Because you just haven't just say finance committee, but.
And why are you tying the finance committee into that, though, as, as the collaborative piece between us and the city council? So I'm a little concerned about, about. Just having the finance committee be the collaborative, like, the.
Okay. So you think I should take that out?
Well, you could say with the school board, um, yeah, in addition to with. The help of the finance committee.
Okay, so to work on the budget with. The guidance of the fu- school board finance committee, how do you want me to change that?
I just didn't, I, I want to make sure I understand what the intent of it is, though, I'm not saying change it, I'm saying I want to make sure I understand the intent of it. Is the fight, or is the intent there to have the finance committee be collaborators with city council? Okay, fair, good.
No, I, what I'd like to do is dump the budget into the finance, school board finance committee in the beginning.
Yeah.
Let the, and that's, that's why I think we thought that would be a good function for the finance committee, let them start. In working on the budget now, like Brian said, they want to meet in September.
Yeah.
So we'll have them start working on it and make a presentation to the school board, so, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so does that make sense?
That makes sense, okay.
Okay.
I, I didn't understand why it was a bullet point necessarily underneath the improving relationship with city council.
Okay. I have a question, but I feel bad for coming in.
No, that's okay, we just started, really.
Are we trying to combine the idea of improving city council relations and the budget into a single goal?
Not trying to expand on the condition, the, uh, subject, topic.
There's a little, I think there's a little bit, yeah, right now, or, I think that's a good question.
Because in my mind, like, I think there's issues with sort of the community messaging and the council that are broader than just the budget. Okay. I just.
The budget is.
Where we were at with the.
And you can already, the budget is one symptom.
Items such as budget.
Hyper-specific you get, the more it becomes.
Well, I think budget's top of mind and then there's a few others.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe new that, new ones that will pop up in the future.
Okay, thanks. Okay, should we say it that way? Items such as budget. Create a working relationship with the city council. Uh, to share. Wait a minute, I'm confused now. Collaborate, okay, here I am. Collaborate with the city council and administration to improve city and school board relations. That maintains school board autonomy in compliance with state law. The first item is items such as the budget. Items such as the budget and give me another item.
So, so this is a different goal.
No.
But related.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Deliver informational presentations to develop understanding of key school department budget issues. Out of district placements as a U fifty collaboration. The council and administration. This would be under that goal.
Wouldn't they just come to our budget workshops though? I mean, are we trying to do that twice?
Um, I think that my experience of the. Challenges and understanding out of district placements are that instead of. Expecting them to come, we request to be on the agenda.
No, I have no problem with that. I was just thinking we're going to do that. Twice, that's not the best use of board time. So if we're presenting it there, then that would maybe be instead of in a budget workshop? Or are we doing both? That's I guess what I'm trying to understand with that.
I, I would see that as ahead of time, so I think the biggest. Or one of the, and I, I think hopefully the finance committee can help. To understand all of this, but I think the biggest piece, um, or my biggest concern coming out of the budget is that the. Lack of special ed spending in-house results in huge increases in out of district placement costs. And so we weren't able to effectively communicate the return on investment of internally funding. So I think those types of issues. Can be discussed separate from the, should be discussed separate from the budget. Um, because I don't think, my impression is that understanding was not achieved through discussing it with numbers in front of people. Understanding of the broader system is important if those specific cuts or numbers are going to be what holds the council back from approving additional funds.
How would you, how would you state that in a brief way? Under our goal of communicating better with the city council.
Deliver informational presentations to council and administration.
Deliver, if I can say it again?
Develop informational, deliver informational presentations. To council and admin. To improve understanding of key school department budget issues.
Why do they need that?
Cause that's what they took out of the budget. I mean, they, I think it's, I think it's hard to understand. I think it's four years in and I barely understand it. But when they have the ability to. Take or leave some of those items and that was their rationale of those not being needed. I think we didn't do a great job of communicating that then, and we need a different opportunity. I think also. Um, in general, the goals are, I think, are more like tactics of what are we going to do? Um, and I don't, things like meet with council quarterly don't necessarily aren't tailored to a specific goal. So I think my intention is more to, we've already identified some of the things that could be. Better examined or discussed. And I mean, take it or leave it, you can leave it, it's just.
Well, Byron hit listed special ed and out of district cost is one of the goals that he wanted us to put in this presentation tonight. So, um, I don't know if that's the place to put it, but. Um, maybe we could make it a separate goal and say, and communicate the. The results effectively with the council and the general public, school population and the general public. So maybe special education and out of district costs should be a separate goal. What do you think about that?
That could definitely work under there. I think it's more the gen. It's more the gen- general goal that's around meeting with council. Um, that I think that that should be more specific, because we could all hang out and have coffee, but that doesn't. Um, move the work of the school board forward necessarily. Does that make sense? So that was more related to that goal of what it is that we want those meetings geared towards.
Yeah, I like the more tactical approach to it, because I think when we. Had goals in the past where it was like just improve communications or support equity, like they were great ideas. But I don't think we had a tactical way to implement them or measure our success towards achieving them. But I'm also like, sort of to borrow the Zach, we're like wondering about the grain size with how like hyper-specific we want to get. Cause something could come up halfway through the year to be. So I like like broadly improve relationships with city council and city staff. And then maybe some such as bullet points under it, but we, who knows what could come up, you know, halfway through the year that we really need to work on that might not be. Those things. I like leaving it a little open if there's a way to do that.
So. Another way to maybe think about this in terms of tactics, like goals to doing something about it. Is if it's aligned, somehow the goals are aligned with a specific committee.
Or our strategic plan.
Or strategic plans, but some, you know, what we're talking about goals for the school board, right? So, um, if it aligned with a committee, like, I don't want to call it. You know, council relations committee, but for the lack of a better term, but maybe those are the kinds of things that we could do to make it more tactical. Certainly, when we talked about budget, we talked about the finance committee, right? Uh, or building committee. And I think if we do want to get real about it, it's either all of us do it. Or some of us specialize in, in that particular area that helps moving forward. So just a way to think about, I don't know if that's really the best approach or if anybody likes that, but. And I'm not suggesting make brand new committees, maybe just shoe ornament to committees that already exist.
Or maybe have a presence on there governing, trying to. Make sure that we're covered on some of those things, or some of those. We could speak there.
Okay, so we're getting off the track here a little bit, I think. Do we want to go back to the goal of creating a working relationship with the city council? Or as Carrie said, collaborate with the city council and administration to improve city and school board relationship to maintain. That maintains school board autonomy in compliance with state law. Do we need that last phrase that maintains school board autonomy in compliance with?
I think we do.
We do, okay.
It also went with the relations down in there.
So how? Do you want to do that?
I mean, I could do it, I have.
Okay, so.
All right, that's okay.
All right, let's, the goal is. To collaborate with the city council and administration. To improve city and school board relations. And you want to keep that phrase in. That maintains school board autonomy.
But I think it needs to be in there. It needs to be one of the reasons that we're.
Okay, that maintains school board autonomy in compliance with state law.
Well, in an effort to.
So that's what the goal is.
In an effort to.
In an effort to maintain. And an F, no, that maintains school board autonomy, is that okay?
Well, well. Leading it, yeah, in an effort to maintaining.
School board relations in an effort. School board autonomy in compliance with state law. And under that, do we want to say something like topics such as budget? Special ed, out of district placement, facilities, facilities.
Conversations about topics such as, and then just throw on a few, I mean, I just think, okay.
I think he's gonna make an important point.
So, so maybe you could, I'm okay with, but if we're going to say, because I'm still really uncomfortable with the fact that. That they picked apart our budget and started looking at it from a line item perspective and more than just saying no. That is to me a problem that's already saying we're going to hand power over to them. When we're saying, okay, we're not going to follow our own pretty, you know, compliance and go, okay, we're going to go. Talk about whatever about the school budget in terms of trying to get them to actually pass it or not, right? If our end goal is to get them to pass it or not, I don't want to have to go in front of them and explain why that is important. I don't want to actually have to sit there and try and explain why we're going to actually work on. Whether it's, you know, reducing out of district placements and trying, like, we shouldn't have to go to that extent. Let's figure out upfront, okay, what, and, and I think one of the, the things that we need to do is. How strict is the guidance that you're trying to provide to us? Here's where we need some room. And have those kind of conversations, and that's fine, but to try and get into line item conversation with the city council is not what I'm comfortable in.
I, I just don't know how to navigate it differently, because, because in the end, they, they had the bottom line authority, right?
They do, yeah.
What it is, and they want justification for our number. So I'm not sure how you.
So I'm going to ask you a question though. Had we met their guidance, would they have asked us?
We have in the past.
Would, would they have still sat down if we met their guidance and asked us on a line item, line item basis to justify the budget?
Well, probably not. We, we've done it on a few things, because what we'll do is, you know, if we've. Fill in the guidance, but we say, but by the way, we want to enhance this particular program and this is the extra spend. This is what it would be. So we've talked about line items ever since I've been here. But normally the guidance comes in about where we're at, honestly. This was the first year, I've been here in eight years.
That they've scrutinized like that.
Yeah.
If you remember, a couple of years ago, they wanted us to have an SRO at every school. Um, and, and we talked about that, we said, okay, it's going to cost eight hundred thousand dollars. If you want to give us eight hundred thousand dollars, we'll put an SRO at every school and that died. Then the second year, they were concerned about the modules of Don Dero. They didn't want us to spend that ninety thousand dollars for the modules of Don Dero. When we proved that we needed that, so they've always done the line item thing, I guess.
But over and above the guidance, right? So that's the other aspect.
Um, so I'd say this year, just importantly, I, I think that. We've come in closer to, to gut, first of all, guidance. The way in which that's delivered or happens has evolved. So, so sometimes guidance has been staff behind, um, you know, having meetings that are not public meetings, talking about what do you think you can. The city council have a broad number, but then there's a lot of staff conversation. So, but I do think, I do think generally you're correct. That if they set, and I think this would be responsible for us, to say, we need you to give us what is basically a starting point for a conversation about. Your bottom line number. And if we can justify that number, then you leave us alone. Basically, you trust our judgment within this arena to do these things if we hit your number. Um, and then we know for every additional hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever, we're inviting them in to now start. To. Yeah, I, I agree with you that in terms of, as a tactic. Uh, or just as an approach, that if we were closer to their guidance, then the likelihood is they leave us alone more in terms of some of these other conversations.
But I would say though, that their guidance has not cut continuing services in the past. So I think that's the rub this year, is that the continuing services in need was, didn't meet their budget. Advocating for additions and.
It's.
New programs and things like that is one, is another piece. Um, so I think we maybe need to really base on what, on really early, what our continuing services budget is, period. Um, and make sure that, I think that gets in front of them before the guidance is developed. Because I think they need to under. Twenty, is, is a reduction in services, period. And we've been there before though, like they've given us zero before.
But they. They came to their senses.
Yeah.
But I think it would be really smart to show them the continuing services early.
And, and when that was a zero budget, it was acknowledged that was a reduction in services. I think it's the twofold part of. The number is a reduc- is a reduction in services, but we're not going to acknowledge it as a reduction in services. We're going to say you're overspending and misusing.
Sorry, that's political. I would say, I think city staff.
Understood, it's.
But I think, I think, I think, I think one of the things we're going to run up against over the long, if I'm going to project over the next couple of years. What we'll run up against is, I think the, some of the internal dialogue. And you're hearing this somewhat with council, concerned about right, the, the level, well, the rising level of taxes. Uh, is that they're going to want us to be closer to inflation. So three. Three and a half, somewhere in that ballpark. And I think city finance is very, has been on record multiple times saying. Our run rate for continuing services is four and a half percent. Uh, and so that's one of those things, it's going to be a rub between this group and city council. If that is the kind of fiscal position of city council, we would be at a spot where every year we're cutting. A one percent of our existing services, or you know, whatever, something in that ballpark. In order to meet that guidance, if that is their long-term projection of all they want to do, right? I think that's where, where we're going to be. I think what's, what is. Would be, I think, what is the, the political side of things then to try to, is, is people want to frame it as, well, we're not really cutting anything. We're just trying to get you to this, to this number. So no, just acknowledge. That if you give us X less, or you, you, not less, but if you don't increase at the rate that is necessary in order to maintain. That you're cutting services and you're okay with cutting services, I think, sometimes.
That's where a finance committee, they're really, oh, early on.
Okay, so where are we? Cause we can't spend. Create a working relationship with the city council. And administration to improve city and school board relations. In an effort to maintain school board autonomy in compliance with state law. And under that will say items such as, do you want to get specific here? Items such as budget with guidance from the school board finance committee. Palmer. Special education and out of district costs. Items such as. And then the second thing, wait, to meet periodically throughout the year with the city council. So that would be that goal.
I like the periodic meetings. I wonder if the specificity is necessary on the exact topic of those meetings.
Okay, maybe we can take out that number one then. We'll take out budget, special education and out of district costs. So just leave it vague. And as things come up and we have those meetings with the city council, we can decide what we want to talk to them about.
I also feel like just politically and strategically, like we need a charm offensive. And like when I was thinking about like. Like, you know what I mean, like. To be like, when they're doing the picnics and they need extra hands, you know, at the barbecue to hand out food, like. We should be trying to do that. Like, we should be trying to find positive ways to be more engaged. So, well, I'm sorry, it just, no, it is what it is, like, but.
We have that down. Community engagement is another goal.
But.
Community engagement.
It's like letting the community see the value that we bring. And the value of the schools, and then also just trying on a one-on-one level to support a lot of the stuff that they're doing in the community where we can.
I agree.
So we're not just coming at them once a year to.
Okay, do you think you got all of that? Sorry.
Yeah, write that down.
Right, we can bring the drafts up, because we're missing three people. I bring these drafts up back to.
So what I can do is.
And we can wordsmith it a little based on the themes.
So we won't vote on it tonight? We'll vote on it at last September night?
I'm just saying, wordsmithing is really hard with a group, a group, and, and maybe having a prototype. Especially because you're down a couple of members anyways, who probably want to have some.
I, I summarize because I couldn't follow you as quickly as you.
Okay, so what could you add?
Foster collaborative relationship with the city council administration. And to enhance relations, maintain school board autonomy, trick compliance with bookable. trick compliance with applicable laws through regular meetings with the city council.
That's good. I like that. Does everybody like that?
Yes.
It's better than what I said.
You have the elements, but it's, it's.
Okay, so we're not gonna talk about budget or, or special ed or anything. It's just whatever comes up, comes up when we have those meetings. Okay. All right. Do you wanna move on? Cause two people mentioned myself and, um, Lisa, community engagement. So just to let you all know, one thing we did today, we had our agenda setting meeting in, in an effort to collaborate with the city council, I suggested, and I'm not sure Zach thought it was the best idea. I think Brian thought it was. We invite the city councillors to our, um, new teacher reception, which we have on September ninth at six thirty in the, you know, the room before the council chamber. So we'll invite the new teachers, the teaching staff, the entire teaching staff and the city council.
So I think we should invite them to everything.
Yeah.
Be in the city manager.
Absolutely. So, okay. Yeah, so that's one way that we are reaching out to prominently. So we'll invite, hopefully we'll get a fair amount of teaching, current teaching staff, plus of course, the new teachers. And then the city council. So we'll reach out to them, um, that way. So that's a way, I, I don't, I don't think we should put that in the goal that we're inviting. But anyway, do you have any, uh, ideas of how you would want to say that? Cause that was the first thing you had said.
I wrote it, yeah, I wrote it really badly.
Oh.
Like I was just kinda riffing in the spreadsheet, but at least from my perspective, that's about doing a better job of communicating to all of the stakeholders, what we're doing, like how we're excelling. You know, like we talked about this for years, even going back before COVID, there was like, oh, what if we did? Like there's pockets of great things we do to promote.
Yeah.
You know, like I love like Don Jerron does, like their Monday mention or whatever, where they highlight just like somebody who works in the building. And it's just a nice, like, thank you for cleaning our classrooms. Like, thank you for putting like Band-Aids on kids and like watching all of the kids who come through the doors every day who are getting sick. And it was just like a nice. And then like just recognizing not just like the football team and not just like drama, but like trying to find like even more cool things going on. So I think part of it is just doing a better job of just bragging about all the cool stuff that we do. And then I think I also look at that as making sure that parents, that taxpayers, that elected officials, that city staff are all kind of looping in. And it's bugged me for years that when you go on the city newsletter, like, like many of the departments have their newsletters linked in the city newsletter and we've never done it. I don't know if we have the bandwidth to bother with that, but there's gotta be some way that we can better highlight our achievements. It's not just parent square. Cause that goes to, you know, our closed loop of people who are already a captive audience, right?
So, so I, I really like your idea and the reason I really like your idea is, is a sit down that I had with, with, um, Daylon. And Daylon's comment to me was, what do you care about? And I said, well, we were talking about what I could care about. And he's, I said, I care about the twenty percent of our population that has students in your schools. And his comment to me was, was you ought to care about the hundred percent.
Right.
Which I thought was really interesting and having sort of a, a school board, public relations committee, whatever you wanna call it, would be, would go a long way to actually addressing that other eighty percent.
So are you suggesting we establish a committee of the board that's public relations?
Oh, no.
I mean, maybe, because everybody thinks that's, I frankly, that's a great idea.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We have a communication. Yeah, but I feel like we do, but we need to know what the mandate is. Cause I feel like we had that communications committee for years. And there was never clarity about the goals. And I feel like the product that came out of there is ultimately not.
Having a, yeah, have a clear with that much, um, we call it per committees. Sorry, the, the kind of the mission statement and the, here's the membership and here are the goals and here's what it's gonna be, it's gonna do. Smart.
But if it's more targeted to like highlight just good things going on in the district, I feel like that's easier to get our arms around and have everybody on the same page. Cause I think we know what good news looks like when we, you know, when we see it.
I, I agree in terms of, of defining the topics, how you actually communicate that might be important.
Yeah.
Though, so, you know, if, if we're trying to, to tutor one to like eighty percent that won't have kids in our schools, then I think that becomes an important aspect that we need to consider as well. They're, they're not looking on Facebook, you know.
Definitely not.
Parents.
I mean, we should be going to see post online, just like, you know, everybody else is and, you know.
And we have a good rapport with Ian Lenahan.
Yeah.
We do, yeah.
He's living in our neighborhood now and it's in the woodlands. With this, I think it's the parents. Yeah, no, they don't make any money at the.
But to, to your point of linking to the, the city's newsletter.
Yeah.
What's the hit rate for that? And I, is it worth our while? So I don't.
I don't think it's the only thing, but I think it's just one thing that we shouldn't overlook, cause those are engaged voters and taxpayers who read that.
True.
City newsletter, um, C coast online.
So I, I'm not opposed to throwing it out there that we have, um, public relations.
A PR committee, okay. Um, one thing I thought, I, I, would we ever think of doing this? Would we ever think of having a a picnic, let's say, in all the different neighborhoods? It would take the whole year to do all the neighborhoods, maybe not a picnic, but some kind of a gathering, cause we don't wanna pay for picnics, but some kind of a gathering in the neighborhoods where we say, come and meet some school board members.
I think we go to them, right? Cause like we used to go to the PTA meetings, we used to show up at school events and that all fell apart during the picnic.
Okay.
Because I think when you ask people to come to you, then you're kinda sitting back and saying, I'm here when you wanna take the time to come find me, but if we go to them.
No, we just had national night after.
Yeah.
Exactly. How many, how many people are at one of their neighborhoods to meet anybody as a school board member?
Not.
City count, national, national night out.
Oh, okay.
National night out, it happens right in the park next to my home. Um, and I get, we get the police, we get vehicles, um, and we. They do.
Even in a non-election year, I've seen my, they've been.
Numbers, I see bigger numbers now.
A couple of them will cycle through. I usually see two, they rotate.
And they'll go, they'll go through different ones, but I mean, it was a missed opportunity for us. Um, what was it? Somebody else says the, um, the, uh, farmer's market, then the booth, Market Square. They had, um, them under a tent, under a tent at North Church answering questions and stuff. So I think, I mean, what about Children's Day? I mean, there's Children's Day in downtown Portsmouth. Do we make ourselves available for that? On Children's Day where everybody is coming to hop through the different retailers all through downtown Portsmouth? And the parents of your children residents are on, but why aren't we a part of that? Especially on Children's Day, for goodness.
So, yeah.
To my point, we need a public relations.
We need a committee to organize all those events.
Yeah.
Okay, so should we make, should we make that a goal then to establish a public emissions committee to improve community relations between the school board and the community?
And then they can make, oh, they live here. Then on their, their seminal meetings, they can make their own mission for them.
They can, they can define their own project.
You're gonna like, we've got the parade coming up.
They can define their own project.
So I think it was that we put in there that we wanna also try to make better use of city resources. Like, are we allowed to reach out to their PR? I mean, that's been a little, I know we've tried, but we hired him.
Answer was no.
So I think, we think the, um, we've had some conversations about like, can we, to what extent the communications officer in the city, could we kinda like have a slice?
Trying to.
Have a slice of them and, and it's, they know, there, I think the conversation, we can always reengage these conversations, but the dialogue in the past has been, um, if we would like him to preview something for us. Welcome to do that. Well, when they have opportunities to.
Okay, got it.
Like the newsletter, we're welcome to connect with that and give it some way to, to have our stuff be part of it. But, but in terms of the answer so far has been in terms of utilization for that person, for projects for us.
I should just invite him to join the committee.
Now they, what I'm saying, I was at, so I was, but I would say there was a, there was a, I was at, uh.
Rely on his expertise.
And so I was at Tuesdays, the city has their department that meet and they invite the charter department heads to dispay income. So we, so we were, I was there today and there, there's a conversation on the development of a communications mini slash, is it staff wide, um, kinda, they jokingly call it a support group. Um, for people in each of the different departments who are, who have some types of responsibilities that are in the kind of PR communications arena. The way, the way in which, and this could be something we can talk about in terms of the structuring of our stuff. Right now at the district level, almost all that stuff comes through. My, we don't have like a person independent of me who has responsibilities in that, in that area at the moment. We have, but all schools are producing a whole bunch of stuff on their, on their own.
Um, yeah, um, one thing we do have coming up too, really actually is the Halloween parade.
Yeah.
On top of, well, the Christmas parade, everybody, you guys.
We are, we've participated.
We've already participated enough, but the Halloween parade at the elective.
Well, I know it's. No, no, we should, but I mean, those opportunities to be like, here's the school board and guys.
We should dance.
Like whatever.
I'll hold the fun.
Put the, uh, you know, I think, I think I've appreciated over the last couple of years, Nancy trying to get us out to the Christmas parade. Um, but when we go, we've got a banner and then city councils got all their like, um, they've got, uh, they got, they got the, like their Christmas Carol, uh, Victorian England, uh, outfits and stuff. And we've got a banner and, uh, whatever necklace, whatever, uh, Christmas light necklaces. Like I grabbed that CD S of the way, uh, you know, so.
But we have our schools. We have one, two, three, four, five.
Great opportunity to do.
To in, invite the students to be a part of it. And we, we have our own families, but of like, if we made it something for the, for the kids to do and even make it a project for, you know, different grade levels. I mean, they've done the Thriller dance, I don't know how many times. I mean, it's amazing and I love it. I love the different themes and stuff like that, but maybe, you know, you know, the kids could do, come up with something new. I mean, there is a theater program. There's a lot out there. There's the choir. I mean, there's a lot there for us to bring if we're, you know, we're school boards, so we'll not bring the kids in on it.
So this is something that Brian thinks community engagement is a better name than public relations.
Foster stronger relationships with all community members, yes.
Okay, so that, that's gonna be a big committee if we wanna do all these activities that we're talking about.
But it would help that committee will organize that.
Right.
Like a lot, there's a lot of work to.
So it's, it's a committee of the school board.
Yeah.
Okay. Does everybody like the name community engagement committee?
Yeah.
I like that too. I like C, we see.
Okay.
Get a whole acronym time.
That committee could submit, um, stories to the, to the, uh, community newsletter that the city puts out and we can call Ian Lenahan and say, can you do a story on this or that or whatever, you know, do some of the successes of our students. And he's very good. I enjoy working with him. Do you?
Yeah.
No, you too.
I, I like him.
Very face.
Do, do, does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I only have one more goal, cause they all come three.
Oh, we can only have three.
Well, I would just be cautious, even.
We don't wanna too many work.
Yeah, you just, yeah, I wanna be, cause those are two big, those are two huge things right now. So they try to fix the, uh, try to improve the working relationship basically.
Yeah.
With, uh, with the, uh, city council.
Charm offensive.
Huge. That's a big goal. And that's enormous. Uh, and then, uh, another one, if, if you're, if we're gonna start to, there's, there's a decent lift, it's not just to get a committee, there's a decent lift of your, of the committee, the committee identifying things for you and staff and people being engaged. Maybe a lot of your time gonna add to for you. So I'm, I know you have other ones you need to talk about. I think you wanna be careful. I don't, I wouldn't wanna close out and say, let's not discuss the other, the other things, but those are two big, big things for you to do in the course of one year.
Okay. Well, um, the other one that Byron had and Lee, Lee's relates to is ADA compliance and special ed and out of district costs. So do we wanna make that a goal or? Um, with that? I don't know. What do you all think? Do you foresee finance getting into the weeds on some of that?
Well, I mean, now we get into I'm curious as to what you mean by ADA. How is that going to, it's a great thing to finance, so.
Do you wanna comment?
I wasn't tied necessarily to finance, so here, yeah, the people's suggestions. I mean, yes, there is a financial aspect to it, but.
I think there's also.
That wasn't. Yeah, and, and if we're going to actually address some, uh, inclusivity from our, uh, school district standpoint and start to figure out how to, by the way, I'd love to know, it's interview.
You loved what?
Dan.
Dan Alexander.
Yep. Our new, uh.
Oh, how did you do?
My old bikes, um, and, uh. And, and so, so from the standpoint of what Byron wants to try and achieve, it, and I do too, it's part of what, what I was hoping we'd actually accomplish, which was if we're gonna reduce out of district costs, we need to have a baseline and that baseline needs to be that you're actually ADA compliant from a school budget standpoint in the first place. And then start to address some of the other issues in terms of trying to figure out how to, how to develop programming helps reduce out of district places. And so from that perspective, the, I think that's going in and in. I didn't really think of it from the perspective of finance, you know, you gotta figure out what you're gonna do before you actually figure out what you gotta fund, right? So. It's, it's, it, and ultimately it's being a budgetary issue. So I mean, saying, it's a, ultimately it's a being a budgetary.
Oh, yeah. So you've gotta figure out what you're gonna do before you're gonna go budget for. Now it could be that the, the place for this is, I don't know what you have in there superintendent list, but one of the things could be explore opportunities. Superintendent bringing you crew with Dan with staff. Here are, here, here's this like deeper understanding of where we are with, uh, with, uh, how to replacements and here's a plan.
That's what I would like to have.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And I actually thought I had made it a superintendent.
Oh, there we go. So I'm saying, so that might be, that might be, and that's a lift and Dan's new to the, to the stuff, but, but if it's the thing where we would have a plan by budget season, that would.
By September.
That would be a multi-year plan to try to, try to like, you know, do less, how I just replacement can build in more programming and how's that would be, you know, I think that's a reasonable superintendent goal. And then I'd work with staff to, to do that type of stuff. Might be a better place to put it than.
That feels like that aligns with the strategic plan goals too.
That's, yeah. That's.
I didn't think that was a budget issue either. It's more looking for ways to better integrate students into the way that we're doing everything. So that, that takes, it will probably take people, you know, once we get to where we need to be with it, but.
So a couple of these, maybe, and I was just thinking of this, is a couple of things are kind of in our strategic goals, the, um, curriculum stuff that you mentioned, um, stuff like that. What if, I'm just thinking of this now is school board goal to somehow support the continuation of that. Cause I wanted to move, I wanted to continue to move forward and I don't know if there's, it means, um, school board says, I, I don't know what the, um, goal would look like, but something along the lines, or maybe it's just superintendent, but, um, I'd like to have the school board behind, like, we still believe in the strategic plan.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means probably articulated.
Is that a goal or is that just we've already implemented it? Or you think we just need a goal to sort of restate, we need to continue.
We're gonna be longer in something.
Fair.
It could, and it doesn't, doesn't cost you a lot of bandwidth. I mean, one of your goals could be, we're committed to remaining focused on the strategic plan as we go through the year or something, you know, and you.
Yeah.
You know, not. Trying to stay away from chasing the shiny objects and be like back to the strategic. And that's not, that's everybody. That's not a criticism of you guys. I mean, everybody, when you're in teams and you're working, it's easy to be like distracted.
I just wanted a north star for everybody to say that this is important to us.
Yeah.
So should that be our third goal? Just to continue the, continuing monitor the work of the strategic plan. And that includes ADA compliance, special ed, displacement curriculum.
I, I think.
Blah, blah, blah.
I agree with that. I think ADA compliance is a different. Issue. I don't think that the board's role is monitoring it. I think that we can instruct the superintendent to monitor that, but I think that requires knowledge that. We don't, we don't have. And it wouldn't be. Expected of an elected. Board member.
So it could make that a superintendent goal.
And again, I thought I did it. And if I didn't, I.
No, if, no, I probably copied it down.
I also think. I also think from a. Sorry. Though uh, bringing it up as, as if we're non-compliant. Is. But it's that. Again, not the expertise of the board. Therefore, we could push the administration. In our supervision of superintendent to inventory it, to do this, to do, but it has to be a systematic approach. And not like. My limited knowledge leads me to now explain this. Is that my sense?
I agree. I, I think one of them, but I, I also don't want to dictate how Zach goes about doing that. A self-won it obviously makes sense, you know, but. That's the only, I also don't want to be the one sitting here dictating that Zach how to go about it.
But, yeah, but so.
I just know that we are.
Supporting efforts for inclusion, like I, I would say flipping it to the positive. Uh, the board is dedicated to supporting inclusive environments. For all students and the tactics would be. Reports from the superintendent or something like that, but to take it from like a, um. I don't know. Instead of like, address the problem, you know, like, it's like, these are the things we want to support and we want to elevate. To make them go faster, um, as opposed to. It being, yeah.
So like, I feel like the ADA piece is important because there are just some physical lack of accessibility issues here and there. But then more broadly, like when I go into Lister and see just what a fantastic job they do there day in and day out. Really being inclusive and walking the walk around that. Like, I'd love to take what are the best practices from there and kind of percolate it out through the district. So it's not necessarily just an ADA issue in my mind, but more like really thinking about. What are the more diverse ways that kids learn and what are their different behavioral needs and emotional needs and all of those things? And how do we, cause I feel like ADA is piece of it. Like, there's all kinds of disabilities you don't even see that kids have that affect how they learn and how they function and. Sometimes whether they can stay in the school just. I, I don't know. I just, I just like to see it be bigger than just ADA that we're thinking about, but.
I think, I think you could have the most ADA compliant space and you could be terrible at.
Inclusion, yeah, totally.
So it's more about what we want is safety and inclusion is the positive.
But you can also be inclusive and then still be.
Not compliant. Both things can.
Yeah.
But wouldn't that be safety, like in a, in a physical thing?
Not necessarily.
See, that's why I'm just working for, I don't know.
Okay, so what do we want for this third goal? We want to.
Continue to support implementation of the strategic plan.
Is it the eighteen again?
Okay, Lisa.
Sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
I think that's what, like, I'm sorry. Continue to support implementation of the strategic plan. I feel free to wordsmith that, but I feel like that encompasses.
And that includes what you were all just talking about. Although we could make that a superintendent goal.
Could we circle that? Cause I don't want to give Zach like forty goals either. Yeah, right. Actually fifty would be better. Um, okay, so those are three goals we have now. Do we want any other goals?
I think that's probably.
Those are big.
Ambitious.
All right, um.
So.
Yeah, sure.
So if we're gonna talk about superintendent goals, there's, there are notes in here that are, you know. Personnel.
Related.
Got it.
Could be.
So, um.
Some of those we could just.
Be careful.
Eventually have them.
We save them, about um, people that work with Zach, for Zach, or. Things around that nature. So I know that some of them are kind of. Specific to a couple of things, so just want to be careful that when we discuss.
Okay, Zach, do you have some suggestions for your goals?
No, I, I don't, I don't, yes, I don't, I want you guys to. I have, I have, I, well, no, but I, but I, but I, but I think I want to make sure that in your. My hope is, I would say this, just my hope is. Additional, the strategic plan, things we're gonna do, that it's like two-ish things. Like here are these two things and maybe like, we just talked for a second ago, maybe something is this, put in. Put in the kind of the institutional energy around this, exploring about industry placements and coming back with some type of. Action plan around how to just placements, um, something like, like a couple of those types of things or. It could be broader though, it could be more thirty thousand foot, similar to like establish better relationships with blankety-blank-blank. Um, but anyways, I, my hope is. That it's just in addition to the strategic plan and make sure the district runs. There's like maybe two items that would be like, okay, I gotta really focus on these things too. I would do it, but. That's something you guys.
I'm sorry, Nancy, can you just, um, the themes, the three school board goals, can I just backtrack for one second? Just to make sure we're around.
Communication with the city council, public relations, community engagement.
Community engagement.
And strategic plan. Continuing the work of the strategic plan. Continuing to support the implementation of strategic plan.
So, and maybe this is just like another, maybe that it doesn't fit with those.
Um, we can have a fourth if we want to.
Well, it's, I, I think, I think one of the thoughts and with Genevieve's joining us, elections coming up. Is just orientation, having a, um, you know, standard operating calendar. There's just some logistical things um, that I think we could be strengthened and also some things that can be unearthed from history. And um, updated to current.
But can we add those as action steps? I mean, things that we would do immediately? Is that what you mean? Like, we wouldn't have to make it a goal, just change the way we operate and let's just do it. Like what? Give us an example.
Like when, when new members come on and we have some sort of resource around.
Orientation.
Orientation, um, and or maybe that goes under community relations too, because those sorts of materials. You know, to understand the scope and the um, roles, maybe it fits under there, but.
You know, when I joined the school board, it was, they just threw me the water and they did.
I was told not to say anything. That didn't work out very well for.
I don't think we've ever had any kind of a um. Avoiding type thing.
The last couple of years. Yes. So how long do you want to do it?
From start to finish? That was amazing. He's got a wealth of knowledge.
We add a section where we just have action steps, like.
I think maybe like in. Very light pencil outline, like, put it under community relations, because I think some of it accomplishes the same thing. So like. I think, for instance, knowing that like. New Hampshire legislation passes all this stuff. We have the New Hampshire School Board Association. They help provide some guidance. But like, I think those are things that could be part of a board orientation and would be great little snippets to put out to the community of like. How some of these things work.
I'm hearing that you want a form of a, they call it new board orientation.
Yes, I would like to nominate Brian French.
No, you pick the people who weren't here.
Oh, right, right.
The School Board Association has a very good.
Yeah.
They do.
Yeah. New school board member thing, yeah.
And it might be that we just, with what we want to do is, we already know, we already know that we've got an election coming. Can we contact?
Very well.
And if I tax, the, we have school board association tomorrow and say that on blankety-blank date. After the election, we'd like you to come in to conduct. To, I don't know, one orientations, I'll bring you two sessions. One's gonna be on, well, you know, whatever. The other's gonna be a month later. So now people have been at it for a month and they're like, I have all kinds of questions now. Uh, and um, I mean. That may, maybe as easy as that. I mean, that is the organization could do it. And we can have some of the returning members and some of the staff available. If we have school board association, associations running the show. Others can be here to sprinkle in local color around specifically what are supports with, what are supports with things that are, that are different.
Sorry, so we. We don't, we have to put it in the goal. We just all understand that we'll do that. Is that okay?
I nominate Genevieve because she's learned about.
I know everything.
All right.
It's gonna throw around.
We won't put it specifically in the goal. It's just an understanding that we all.
I want this as a note.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, before we move on to superintendent, is there anything else anybody wants to say about a note we could put on here?
So I think on the logistics front, it strikes me that we're gonna see more and not less wildness coming from Washington and Concord. And if we can try to think right now about how do we want to try to get ahead of it. You know, cause I would prefer as much as possible for us not to be in a position where we feel like we're rushing to implement things in response. And where we more have an opportunity to hear from administrators or, you know, have more of a dialogue around. What we proactively want to do. Um, you know, and I, I mean, like some stuff, it's really hard to tell, but like cell phones is one where we knew like January. That was coming, like governor went on TV and said it was coming, like half the legislature was on TV saying it was coming and then it came. And it felt like we were still sort of rushed to do it. And it's really hard to plan. There's a thousand other things coming down the pike, so I'm just trying to think about for some of the bigger issues, we usually know. That they're coming and if we have an ability to proactively slot into the agendas. To hear from people a little bit. Not on every little thing, but you know what I mean? Like that's a big one where I feel like we kind of knew. And I think that's sort of a logistics thing to me. Like, I don't think it's a goal, but just.
We kind of knew, but I, I don't think we. Until it actually was here and we saw the words, then, then we saw proposed, you know. You know, uh, language.
That's kind of pinning up. Any legislative committee can do a better job of communicating out to the board, because I feel like in that room, we definitely knew this was a thing.
Yeah, we knew.
And we kind of knew what it was gonna say.
We, we need to expand that scope to be more around policy implementation too.
Well, we have a policy committee, so I'm not trying to hijack that. I was just more thinking about maybe to just like raise the. But, you know, attention level on some of those things maybe sooner. I don't know. But still, the logistics thing, I don't want to get lost there. But I was just thinking about that from a.
I want to cite a committee. I enjoy that committee. I mean, it's very interesting to. You know, you really made aware of what's coming up in Concord and, um, so yeah, maybe we could, um, maybe at our meetings, Lisa, you could. Elaborate a little bit on, I mean, you put.
I was gonna nominate you to like. We'll figure it out, but I was just thinking about to not maybe miss the opportunities to try to get out of stuff where we can.
Okay, that's a good point.
But that's not a.
This is a good time to talk about something like that, so. All right, does anybody else have any other comments about school board goals before we move on to superintendent goals? Okay, superintendent goal. Another ones we have was, uh. Oh, um, but this is in the strategic plan. The annual performance reviews for all employees. That's in the strategic plan, correct?
It's part of your implementations and then.
So I, so I think there's one, so the committee that's working on, committee that's working on this. I, I think.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Look, so the committee, the, the steering committee that's working on this, I would say is, is not necessarily headed in the direction of. An administrator is giving. An annual review to every, um, every employee who works for us right now, not part of their conversation, not part of the conversation right now. Uh, just so you know, so there's like, there's a, the, the pushes around, um. How we provide beneficial professional feedback. We're piloting two systems that are video based, that give. Folks, so it gives administrators an opportunity to chime in, give feedback, but also peer-to-peer. Um, feedback on what's happening in their classrooms. So. Right now, I'd say that that goal would not necessarily, would not necessarily align with what. The conversation is of the steering committee, but the spirit of it though is an evaluation, which is. Yeah, 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 yeah. It just wouldn't, but the, but the, the idea of the, uh. Everyone's gonna receive uh, the current form of formalized feedback isn't, I would say is not. Right now, the direction that steering committee is headed at the moment.
Question.
Yeah.
So is that a direction, when you say not at the moment, where maybe if they have a little bit more time to kind of flush that out, that they're heading in that direction? Or is it more that they're thinking that it should be every other year? Cause I do feel like if we're trying to win, plan a strategic plan and make all of these changes in the curriculum, we need reviews. I mean, it does, I don't know if it has to be.
So, so I think, I think it's an important, so we, so we have this conversation about whether or not there was, uh. Whether or not there was mission drift as a result, you know, and I think the, that opinion about. I think it's maybe worth bringing the steering committee in to have a conversation with the board about kind of where we're at at the moment. Um, in terms of what is giving. Yeah, anyways, I think it's worth a dialogue, because we talked about it, it's like, is this like, are we getting off of where? Um, where we were in the strategic plan, if we're moving, for tilting in this direction, and even if it's the consensus of it. The administrators and the teachers in the committee, then there might be a need to come back and have a dialogue with the board. So, thanks.
Is our staff evaluated annually?
They haven't been, the staff has not been, but it hasn't, but I'm saying, it hasn't been for years and years.
How do you, how do you recommend continuation employment, um, execution, uh, you know, um. Extending their contracts, um, how, how were they evaluated and identified ways to improve? And, and grow themselves in order to justify the continuance of a, I mean, like I interview. I review my employees annually, um, and, and that's immediately reflective of their paychecks, you know, because. That's how we grow. We grow by guidance.
And I think that's, I think people all agree with that. They're just trying to figure out to what.
How to execute.
How do you execute it? How do you execute, how do you execute in a way that provides authentic, actionable feedback? And that's been the dialogue. Um, but I, I, it sounds like. I, we should come back. We should, we should come and present.
Definitely.
And say like.
Where, where are you now? How long have you been meeting about this to discuss this?
So we, so we've been, it was the tail end of the year, end of the summer, so we've been, we've probably met. I don't know, five, six times.
And you've come up with some ideas?
So we've got two pilots that are, that run, that are, to these, to these video-based platforms that allow, again, administrative people to record. Their sessions, administrators to comment on those things and then, but also. The peer, peer, the committee is very interested in peer-to-peer opportunities, because they think there's just the volume of two things. They think that the, the volume of, the, the amount of time required to go through the types of processes that are built into the system right now. Are beyond what could be. are beyond what can be managed by administrators.
There's AI out there too that, um, does.
All this AI components that are part of these.
A lot of, yeah.
To, to part of this AI.
It simplifies.
I think one of the two starts with an AI analysis to, as a jump. But then the other, the other part is, they also, people also talk about the fact that in terms of, um, that the, that for most staff, for most staff, we're trying to provide feedback for them to take action on, not because we believe that they're going to, we're gonna end their employment potential, but we, we're just giving them feedback on a regular basis, so how do we do that? Exactly, and, and they're, and from the staff perspective, then administrators agree once they hear it, it's like, look, what you tell me, the, the times I had been administrative, I, I have been, um, uh, evaluated by principal. What you give me is, yeah, it's okay, but when, but when I have a peer who's in my, who does the. Give me feedback.
Assistant manager doing it, not you, not the CEO, you need people at different.
Well, that's the conversation.
Work with those people to do that, so instead of, instead of you getting too deep into the weeds, I would suggest taking and presenting where you guys are at now to say, this makes sense. Uh, we would support something like that, or you might wanna go in this direction, because, I mean, I've done a lot of reviews. And, you know, people only take negative things out of them if it's delivered negatively, basically, so it's all in the delivery.
Yeah.
So.
So to summarize, the steering committee of the strategic plan is working on this.
Definitely working on these questions for sure, and have these two pilots that are lined up. Still gonna continue to get people in the cycle of the, the Danielson approach that's going on still. They're still picking up people in the cycle and doing that work simultaneously, we're gonna run these two pilots and then try to come to a conclusion based on the pilots, but their voluntary inclusion of people, um, uh, in the two pilots, and then we'll, and then we'll come out of that being like, baby, what do we think? So.
I guess, if we're like looking at buyouts and we're looking at getting into cycles of maybe not always a continuing operations budget, I feel like we really need to be reviewing people and giving feedback and making sure that we're getting the absolute best out of our people and setting them up for success. I mean, like, we have people who have never been trained on like how to teach like through the block schedule, and they've been here a billion years and they're good teachers, but they've just never had that.
Well, if you don't have a goal, what are you shooting for?
Right, so I guess I'm wondering if just.
Goal meetings with, with supervisors to start, to start the years, then they do that. Um, but the, uh, but, well, I think what you're, what you will, this is now, now we're hearing into a steering committee two conversation, what the, the, the system, two things, the system is as designed. And all, all, uh, internal stakeholders agree are not achievable for administrators. The number of administrators we have right now to evaluate every single staff member on an annual basis and do the other things they're supposed to be doing, um, to the level of the tail and the level of, um, rigor that has evolved in that process, on, and right, but right now, the, and, and then the concern is in terms of things that would affect people who are in continuing contract status, so no longer probationary, the process, what that process expects legally in terms of your ability to no longer employ somebody um, is a very high standard, so what the conversation that we've been having is, for the eighty percent of staff, what we wanna make sure is, we're, we've been talking like ninety, for like ninety percent of staff, where there's not um, immediate concern, we wanna make sure they're getting good professional feedback on an annual basis. For the ten, who we've got questions about whether or not they should be continuing, there's, you know, we would would not come out of this process, this process would help identify those people, for them to be a secondary process, with those who are on a different track that where we could do a rigor, the rigor was connected to a smaller number of people where it could have an impact on their ongoing employment. So, um, now that's different for, and, and I think we've got new people who are probationary. That's our time to, to also be having those conversations, because we don't have a, we don't have a, a long-term obligation to them. We can just say, at the end of a probationary period, it's not a good fit for us. We appreciate the time you put in, but we're not, we've just decided at this point, moving on, once you have someone on a continuing contract, you have a whole bunch of legal hurdles you gotta go through in order to, because of the, the nature of, um, both our CBA and expectations of law, it's a whole bunch of hoops you have to go through in order to be in a position where you would terminate.
Well.
And so it's usually a multi-year, it's usually a multi-year process.
My major reaction is, it, it feels positive.
Yeah.
Because it's better than nothing.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, and I guess I don't, I don't have a horse in the race in terms of how it's implemented or how it's done. Um, but I do think it has to be systemic.
Yep.
Somehow, whatever the, whatever the practice ends up being, and whatever the cadence happens to be that works.
Yeah.
Um, but I do feel like ultimately you own that somehow, because you've gotta be, you know, you're getting evaluated.
Right.
So, a lot of it at this point, so, um, and I think, I think we all agree it's really important then for a couple of, I think, really good reasons, um, I don't know how to write it in a goal to, to accomplish that it's important to us, but um, and I don't know how much directly you'd affect that process, but other than saying it's important and I, I would like to see it become systemic somehow.
Yeah.
Do you have a rollout timeframe?
So, now, so we're still, so we're going through, our goal is to do the, is to do the two pilots in the fall. Come to a decision, uh, because part of the, um, cover the decisions, we're in a position to inform the board during our budget season. There are budgetary impacts, um, as a result, if we're moving in some other direction. And then part of the strategic plan for this year is to, is once we've established those, we've identified those things, then this is a three-year implementation plan we're making this year for the next three. So, so right now, we're in that, we picked, picked the two for the pilot, we're doing, we're gonna, got to recruit the people to be part of the pilot. Run the pilots, get feedback back on the pilots, and then be in a position to, our, uh, our goal is by mid-December to be done and say, okay, this is where we think we wanna be, and then come back to the board as part of the budget season, say, this is, this is a big contribution, uh, budget contribution, so.
So you feel there'll be a plan by the end of the next school year?
So, we, I gotta go back to, because the strategic plan actually spells out
When it has.
These things are spelled out in the strategic plan.
Okay.
So our goal is to continue to be in line with the strategic plan.
So do we need to make this a goal? Do we, I mean, it's already in process, do we need to make it a superintendent goal? What do you all think?
Well, we've made, implemented a strategic plan broadly a goal before. And I guess my wondering around this particular aspect is, I don't know how we're successful at all the other pieces of the strategic plan rollout, if we're not giving some form of annual feedback to people on how they're executing. And I'm not even suggesting that should be punitive, or that it should take like eight days per person, or whatever.
So we're not talking about not providing feedback, it's just a matter of, what would the source? We're, and we're still having that conversation, so we're gonna run the pilots, but would the source of that feedback be, and would it be, we're still kind of asking those questions. Would it be acceptable, depending on having people in cycles, that some people, that it would be systemic for people to receive colleague-based, something that we could track, it was trackable, that they receive, they had gone through a colleague-based process with feedback that we would be able to be aware of. But it wouldn't be delivered by an administ-, not for everybody, some of those people would not be delivered by an administration. It would be delivered by a colleague, and so that's, that's some of the dialogue we're having right now.
Fair.
So, not all the time, but it would be, people would be on different cycles, so, sorry, we're, we're still fleshing it out, that.
But can we be running on two tracks, where there are annual reviews happening right now while we're working to build a better process? That will ultimately be the thing if the district uses.
So the current all, so at least on this, on this group composed of administrators and teachers, the consensus is, the current structure, which has proved out over time, is not implementable in a way that would, would allow all staff to be evaluated through the existing process. And that's part of the reason why it's broken, and that's why people are saying, I haven't, I haven't had an opportunity to be evaluated, I haven't been evaluated in blank number of years, um, some people not, you know, ten years, they haven't been evaluated formally. So, um, uh, you know, definitely people who've worked for us for a long time say, the last time I got evaluated was ten years. And, and no, and that, and some of those are probably that, those examples too, so, um, and so that, I think people are, are looking at what the structure of what exists and saying, it is not achievable with current staffing to implement now, every single person in the district, that set of, that set of evaluations. And that, again, it's been proven out over, over decades.
What, what would be different in another school system that would make that feasible?
So, I think there's a, so, what, well, you got, it depends, it depends, different places try to tackle it in different ways. Now, I've been in places where what we did was you had all your new, all the new people who were probationary had annual, had annual reviews, so if you're a brand-new teacher and you, your first two years you were probationary, uh, in our district, those first two years you had, um, you had at least one, in some cases, two, two review cycles during those first two years. Uh, and then you would, you know, you either, we either continue with you or we would, then all the other staff in this system, the way it was set up, was all the other staff was placed on three-year cycles. Um, but once you had established in a three-year cycle, somewhere in there, if you was established in five categories, four, four out of the five categories excellent, then you could get put on, um, peer-to-peer coaching, so then you would go off and you'd be for multi, could be for a four-year stretch. You had to turn in peer-to-peer coaching plans, I'm gonna work with so-and-so, because I've already demonstrated I know what I'm doing in my craft. I'm gonna work with so-and-so in order to do, in order to get better at, um, this particular aspect of delivering instruction. Uh, so even in that system, not everybody was being done all the time, uh, and the.
So it's more that there's not that baseline of folks needing annual, folks on three-year, folks on five-year with peer-to-peer, or and so the burden of doing, say, three annual reviews in a row would just be so overwhelming to administration.
So if you had, so if you had to go through a process, the, the current process with every single, with every single staff member, with the pre-meetings, post-meetings, the what people were reporting is that it's not achievable, the current system is not, you cannot accomplish it and basically do any of the other aspects, not any, you, you would struggle to do the rest of your job. Because what you would be doing is spending all your time on these particular things.
And I hear that, and I don't wanna get stuck on this, but I know people had a lot of other goals, and I'm just thinking, as we're changing the curriculum in some cases really dramatically, just feel like we need an annual snapshot of like, how are people adapting and changing and growing, and, I mean, I know a lot of people are really doing very well with it, but if people are having any issues, like you'd wanna be able to pinpoint that and address it, and not have it be waiting on a longer process to kind of
Yeah.
figure out the ideal new review system, like I'd hate for it to be like, we're out another three years and then going back to going, oh, we had somebody who didn't quite get one piece of the shift, and maybe we missed an opportunity to kind of support them.
Well, I think, I mean, the, a formal evaluation process is not the only time that we're having conversations with staff about what's going on, now that is, it, you know, there's different frequency and volume in which people are having, just having dialogue, but it's not dialogue that we could use because it's not built into a system around the CBA and around the regulations, where we could use that dialogue to say, you're not gonna work here anymore, like, you know, so, so, but the volume at which those dialogues are happening and those checks are happening might not be at the level that you'd feel comfortable with, that's possible.
So, do we want to create a goal on this, or do we just want to state that by the end of the twenty twenty-six school year, a plan will be in place based on the work of, through the strategic plan?
That's already gonna be baked into the strategic plan.
Okay.
So.
Does, are people comfortable with that, or?
Could we hear the other goal ideas first, because I don't wanna have like a huge list, and I'm just curious if there's others that rise up.
Do you, you know, looking at that?
And I would definitely be sharing the video of this conversation with the committee, for sure, could be like.
At a board meeting, a future board meeting.
Yeah.
With the steering committee, we could probably do that the second meeting in September.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll be, I mean, we're, so we're about to, we're about to re- recruit on opening day, do some recruiting of people to do the pilots. What I'm worried about, I, I, I think, yeah, I don't know where, I think we can have some type of update for you, we can have, you can have an opportunity to engage people, the second meeting in September, if I can pull those people together, and we can have some dialogue and talk about. This is where we're at.
At least to have news that you're discussing, you know, to like support it and whatnot, not that you have to have everything structured and itemized, but just, these are our two ideas, you know, and this is what we're thinking. This is more receptive because of X, and this is, you know, this one's easier to accomplish because of Y, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to kind of, because it sounds like it's something that's been delayed for quite some time, so it would be nice to have an execution.
Right, and so, and I do, I mean, I do think we're.
Yeah.
I think we're on pace with what is in the strategic plan, which is, we would, we identified two things. Now we're gonna implement, we're gonna do two pilots, we're gonna come to conclusions, so we're on pace to do what's in the strategic plan.
I think sharing those two pilots would be interesting, for me at least, I'd like, yeah, I, I'd like to know what they are.
Sure.
Which. I'll go back to saying the, the goal is to execute what has been planned on for year one. And if there's variations of that, that covers curriculum and evaluation, a few other things, so.
And it's actually stated in RSA.
Yeah.
School, school board shall adopt a teacher performance evaluation system.
Oh, it's right there?
I, I know, but even ours is, is evaluation should occur once per year, but may not occur more than once per year if superintendent, principal, teams determines additional evaluations are necessary. So we actually do have, we've made a statement, but in one eighty-nine does not require us to have a free, like, does require us to have an annual frequency.
No. No, it doesn't, it'd be by choice.
All it says is that we actually, as a school board, should adopt a teacher performance evaluation system.
Right. Yeah, annual, yeah, the annual's not a state.
So the goal should be the continuation of the implementation of the strategic plan.
Or more, you know, adhering to the.
Implement strategic plan.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Feel like it's.
According to.
Automatic.
Define, execute.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a, I mean, we're still, we, we've been.
So, I'm just saying, you know, you have a schedule.
Yes.
Adhering to that schedule.
Yes.
That's really well.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
Nope.
Okay, so that will be one goal.
Does anybody have one of the other ones?
I just wanna make sure we're missing something else.
What, ours are little, why can't you have a little one?
Um, uh, Lee, what did you mean by modernize the curriculum to prepare students for, what, what? Did you say that?
So, so, yeah, so one of the things that I, and I don't know how it's gonna be accomplished because of the fact that we've lost the. Well, one of the things that I've continued to hear from parents is that we're not doing great, God stated, one of our council meetings too. Our working session, that we're not preparing our students well enough for
The future.
For the future. And so one of the things that I, I have continued to have conversations with parents about is what are we doing from a STEAM or STEM, I'm more, the Christian STEM, but STEAM's standpoint. And how are we actually improving that curriculum in order to support students' future, so.
That's when I think it circles right back to the kind of community outreach. Like several new classes.
My daughter is taking very interesting class her freshman year, I'm like, what? It's introduction to medicine.
Yeah.
Freshman year, I was like, what? Freshman year. I was like, what? And I did see at the high school, there is a, a little, um, a like, a little hospital room.
Yeah.
A gurney with a, I was like, well, she's, she's taking that freshman year. I was like, wow.
I would think another piece of that is under the strategic plan execution too, is around curriculum alignment and all the other. I don't know how that will all suss out with the.
Person gone. We're gonna, so, yeah, so, so, um, you know, some of that responsibility is gonna shift to, uh, to Patty to get us through some of that coming here. Um, so some of that will happen, but there will be aspects of it. We will not. And I think we could have more conversation when Patty's here, but Patty's here again. About kind of what the, what are some of the things that won't result of being short that position. It's essential for, you know, what we're trying to do. So. That cover that or?
Yeah, it's not STEAM specific. It's everything.
Anybody else? I, I got something. I think the superintendent should work to make the best it can be the administration of the schools, the climate of the schools, and it's an academic and social outcome for our students.
Okay. That kind of covers a couple of.
Yeah.
Points people ahead.
I think improving morale was like something that has come up in a variety of ways. That's what I was thinking with climate. Yeah, word climate.
Yeah, I think climate goal could be good. I mean, it's been, last year was tough.
Yeah.
Year in a lot of ways. Uh, so I think, you know, I think a climate goal makes sense.
Does that make sense to you?
It does. I mean, that, and again, that's a, that's a.
It's a big.
That's a big.
Broad.
Um, but like, there's things, there's steps that can be taken.
Schools.
Yeah, there's steps that can be taken.
Just one. Not just one school.
Yeah.
It's the same too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to write that down?
Yeah, it's focused on one school, but the other schools.
Right, it's a, everybody, oh, you mean.
Um, currently there's a.
Plain.
These for.
Have you much focus on one school?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's like, not just, I know, I know you have a goal to be in, in high school, like during the week, but having the kids know you, not by video, but by person.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know if you've seen that video of that principal who walks, I love it, walks through the, um, the halls and each different student, he has a different hand and shake with each different kid. I love this. And just the interaction that these, the younger kids they have with their principal.
Right.
But it would be really nice for you to come up with a nice high five for every kid Zach. There's only a couple in this whole district, so.
Couple thousand handshake.
Uh, so. Generalized one per school. Grade level.
Are we looking specifically though, as sort of like morale and climate and visibility? Or are we also trying to bake in, I guess, the industry? Oh, I'm sorry.
Not done yet. Sidebar.
Anybody have a question for today?
No, go ahead.
It, it's a longing and
Yeah.
In, in that piece.
Yeah.
Have there been any chats about like doing sort of climate surveys, which I know is sort of a bad.
So we, so we have, have done a set from the spring.
Oh.
And so Patty's gonna do some, Patty, still, are you, and? Maybe she's.
Patty.
I'm here, yep. We had done a bunch of surveys, that's part of our focus area three work coming up this, I don't know if I want to call it fall, but the committee for focus area three needs to look at what we collected um, with the panorama surveys that we launched back in mid, early mid-May and closed them in about June. And we have to sort of look at the data, crunch the data and come up with some plans going forward. Um, and all of the, like the data dashboards are now linked on the website. So you can see what we're looking at to do for next year. So if you look at the, um, strategic plan page, the new data dashboards are all up there, but that's definitely one of the things that we're gonna be doing. Yes.
It is, sorry, this is a very academic and social success. Is there a vendor that's doing that for us or is it?
Panorama is a, panorama is a company. So.
Okay.
And so the, uh, so they, we, we, they're, I mean, they don't provide any like onsite support per se.
Yeah.
They work with us to develop surveys to make sure they're valid and viable.
And there is professional development for us to understand how to read the data, what to do with the data, what sort of comparisons to make. And the same survey can be run multiple times a year, a year over a year. So you can do comparisons longitudinally as well.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, one of the things that we need to, so we haven't fully digested the superintendent eval results with the board.
Hmm.
Because of board member absence this summer, um, namely myself. Um, and so I, I think one of the things that I thought I would develop while I was on sabbatical was like this grade system, but the systems we have, uh, it just is too, they're not good for analysis. So I think for long-term, um, when I get hit by a bus or don't run for school board again, um, it would be ideal to work in a superintendent eval.
Yes.
Into another method that's not board member driven. Um, and even doing something more frequently. So I think we need to have a committee, a superintendent eval committee meeting soon anyway, but just to keep that in the back of your mind, Patty, of whether that's a vehicle for that as well.
That particular company not, there are other, there are other companies, uh, using something called super eval with, in a pilot with some of my administrators. It might be a good, might be a good, um, tool to use for, but there are tools out there for boards to use that help, that help, uh, make the process easier in terms of superintendent evaluation.
It's mainly that the resources we have don't export to numbers, they export text fields.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In our, in our Google systems. So that's the main time suck, but, um, so on that note, I just wanted to mention in, as we draft these, it, there are other data points that we can consider as a board when that's which will be shared if we want a specific, because specifically we talked about measures and measures from those evals. And I think that the, once we have a draft before we finalize these, we would typically have a non-public to review some of that material and then delineate some measures.
But to your point though, if we, and again, this comes to, we were, we were talking about this, um, a while ago is like, you know, it's a lot of work for that committee to do that and then compile it and, and it's also would change year to year depending on the makeup of the board.
Right.
Right? So it's like, how do we have some more consistency? That's what we're talking about, like a service or a product or something that we could use. Um, that may be more, much more consistent for the experience for us. Cause it's, it's much easier as a board member to digest when everything is like sliced and diced and ready for you. Um, so that, that's what we discussed and so it will be hard to sort of land on numbers this year and say, do this and see these numbers change, I guess, I'm saying.
But I think, and I, and I think just, uh, as on the committee, I think we have a better idea of what we want or don't want. So it would be a good time to establish that because we have way too many items. We have items we don't really, that don't really, you know what I mean? I think it's good for the current group on that committee to have input into transitioning into a sustainable way.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Would the committee have bandwidth to reach out to some other boards or other districts and see, cause somebody has to have an off-the-shelf thing that they've been using successfully.
They're definitely.
Everybody's got board members that are gonna do all that data analytics on the side.
I think it's, I think it's more the, we don't have it in the budget. We don't, not that it's like a huge ticket item, but it's just something that we have. The three sixty eval is relatively new. And so now to sustain that, there's just some budget implications.
Fair. I just think in terms of the long-term viability of it, trying to come up with something. And if we have to make a budget discussion, at least we know what we're talking about.
Can I remember? And you won't remember. I'll, I'll check it out. And we, so we did, we're doing this small pilot with the super, the super eval project. Three grand, five grand.
And I want to say five.
Between three and five with.
Yeah, that would be great if we could, because I think the other issue when we started this whole process was that we didn't, we also didn't have S A U emails. So like, we weren't necessarily authorized users for any of the schools. So
Yeah.
Maybe if you can do some, or you are.
I can definitely use like work around.
See if that's possible.
Here's the, here's the field of like the different types of products that are out there for you and platforms and approaches. Um, and then happy to sit down with the committee and say, here's this, here's generally what people are using or here's what seems to be more cutting edge. Or here's what things that look like, address the problems you're talking about in terms of the challenges. Um, and, and to make it more doable for boards. So it's not like, you know, it's, you could, and you kind of have a, you know, a system ready to go and you just gotta hit, hit send and then it's doing all the, it's compiling, it's putting it together in ways that spit it back at you where it's.
And we want timeline for you and for.
Right, right. Because otherwise it's only so, so useful. So anyways.
Okay.
This is what.
Sorry.
This is what you.
Okay. Two, goal number two, to work, to work to improve the administration, climate and superintendent visibility of all of our schools to support the social and academic success, success of us students.
In all of our schools.
Yep, in all of us.
I'm worrying that's just too far away from like the employee morale piece that we really.
Well, climate, does that, does climate encompass?
Climate and visibility.
Um, I guess, are we trying to assess it though, based on academics? That's my, I guess my question. It's like the way that's worded, is that we were worried about test scores when we're deciding how morale is or?
It, it's more about staff, right?
I think it's more about his staff.
So can we just say to improve the administration, climate and superintendent visibility in our schools? That's it.
I think.
Okay.
Or what's the, how do you determine your climate survey stuff?
I mean, it's a whole question bank of stuff for different types of stakeholders. And they're stakeholder specific. And then what's great about panoramas, then you have.
Yeah.
National data set that you can then break out by different demographics and compare our kids versus, you know, you know, tens of thousands of responses from, hundreds of thousands of responses from other kids around the country. And then you can break it out by, I want to see our kids in the ninth grade who are female compared to the national sample. I want to see, you know.
Oh, it's not staff.
No, well, there was a staff part, but it wasn't, wasn't really. They didn't use specific terminology. There were a lot of broader questions. I think that what you're looking for is more specific.
Okay.
So what we could work, I mean, what we could work towards, oh, so now you wouldn't have a baseline. What you could work towards is trying to establish something to create the baseline. So it could be back to, I mean, panorama has the option, Patty, of some of the question banks, because I used it in Vermont. The question banks are, um, can be staff-specific around kind of school climate-based kind of issues. And we could establish a baseline and then we use track it longitudinally. So we would do two administrations a year when I was in Vermont.
Yeah.
And then we had to look over time, we could look at each of the different questions and what was happening, staff. Um, and how people are receiving their work in our, so. Those are the types, but, but so I, so I would say, so I'd say morale, what do they would be interesting and challenging about morale is how do you measure it? Right? How you, so, so it's like, how do you measure that it's gotten better or it's gotten worse? And so it's like, it's the same or those types of things. Also visi- visibility, yeah, and how do you measure it? Um, is it just asking people, uh, asking any volunteers who wanna, who want to, uh, uh, contribute to a survey anonymously, was Zach visible? Yes, no. Uh, you know what I mean? Like, so it's like, so it's like, is that a real measure of visibility?
We're gonna put a tracker.
It's a, well, I'm just saying, those are the types of, but it's like.
A GPS.
It's, it's a GPS tracker.
It beeps every time.
We're gonna see you go into every room.
Didn't really say they want to see you in the classroom.
Yeah, yeah.
And whether that's like, uh, they stay.
Right. So like, is, if there's not a great way still in just hearing that there's, okay. That visibility is important, right? And so like.
Definitely hear that.
I mean, yeah. And I think that was the part with the survey. It was like, well, if it's, if we're doing a survey, is it the same people self-selecting? So can you then claim a baseline and then change? I don't know. Probably not. Okay. So how does this sound to work to improve the administration, climate and superintendent visibility in all of our schools to support the success and growth of our staff? How does that sound to everybody?
Want you to start.
Okay, so that's, that's.
I mean, it's a good goal. I just don't, it's not, it's not a, what do you call it? Smart goal. It's not like a.
That time takes like a smart time.
Yeah.
It's near now, it's general, but it gives you a lot of flexibility to do what you think you need to do to accomplish.
I love the flexibility to accomplish. I, the, what, how will we know whether or not that has occurred?
I think.
Oh, we can measure some of it.
I, I think.
We passed.
That was the point about the superintendent eval. So I think there's some pieces from that, but to be honest, the climate or the whatever survey also sounds like another.
I mean, it's a good, I mean, it would be a good thing for us to move forward. I think it is possible through the, some of the full free work to move in that direction. That's just the one, we just do it. You always have a sonar ping on, whether it's an annual or bi-annual basis. So, so our ping of, this is what a snapshot of what staff are saying about their experience in districts. And you compare it to some other people in the huge sample size.
You're spending that day in the high school, for example. So you can even come to us and say, look, so I have had this time here and this is what I've been doing to have boots on the ground. I mean, you're perfectly able, once you figure out what that looks like, to articulate that back to us.
I think what will be, what will be challenging in that, this is the, um, uh, and I'm not trying to be persnickety about this. It's just the, I'm trying to get to like, we get to the tail end of the year and you're trying to decide. Did he do it? Did he do it? Right? And I can come back and say, hey, you know, geez, yeah, I, I, um, I, 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 this is my plan. This is what I did. And I'd say about sixty percent of the time I was doing X, Y, and Z and, um, um, and then it's like, so how? I don't know. You're, you're, I hear what you're saying, you're saying.
I feel like you can.
You what?
I feel like you can make.
I can just keep a log. And it's like, here's my log.
I don't want to look at your log.
Well, you just, I mean, but it's like, here's the days that I were, I was in such and such school for, you know.
What, what was the, like, and what was the purpose?
Well, no, I mean.
Oh, I think it is worthwhile, right? It's like.
Good, yeah, could be. Here's a, here's a, here's a snapshot of, uh.
We all have a.
Because, because all, we have, but all we've got right now is, is one side of that equation. We don't necessarily have the same perspective from the other side of the equation. And it's that, it's like, we're, we're going through this annual review process and going, okay, we, we gotta help you to figure out a way to actually be workable or, you know, have a different level of communication with staff.
But being in a school that being he's, or somebody feels.
But if we know what he did and we know how that survey comes out in the eval, then we've got both sides of it. Because if it worked, then I feel like it should inch up a little bit.
Well, I think, I think one of the things, but I think also the, go, go ahead.
That's why I'm saying, per, per, like, not just keep, keep it long, you're saying, keep it long. I went here for, you know, on this day and wow. What was the purpose of the visit? Did you actually participate in any of the school events, for example, or something like that, right?
Yeah.
To me, that's, that's gotta raise some staff awareness of, of what's that being within that school.
Yeah. I think it's, I think what's interest, it's the.
I know it's a pain in the ass.
No, I know, but, but if you want to get to, but I think also too, it's this like establishing what is the standard, is the appropriate standard for the amount of time.
Right, yeah.
So, so let's go back to, we talked about this before. So as a person who taught for twelve years, I never had a superintendent in school ever in my class once. Multiple school districts. I had one assistant superintendent, one time in the back of my class for twenty minutes. Multiple school districts. Multiple school districts. I have one assistant superintendent, one time in the back of my class for twenty minutes. Multiple school districts, right? So, the, and there's a reason for that, because it's like, there's more to the job than sitting in people's classrooms. Uh, and so it's like, where is that? What is the appropriate level of visibility? Not, not, what do people feel about it, but what do you expect is the, you know, what does visibility mean to you? And what does, um, and I, and then. I think once we establish that standard, then I'm happy to be like, I can record, I can track, this is the amount of time I'm spending.
That's why I'm thinking about school events as opposed to like.
Well, events are great, because events you can, you're, in, events are, are great in terms of. But it's the, I think what is challenging. What is challenging is the, um. Yeah, just being able to be in everybody's, everybody's classroom.
Yeah.
I would suggest, let's, as we look at, as the superintendent eval committee, once at the eval. Let's keep this conversation in mind to think about, because I think we're, we're gonna change. We had wanted to change some measures and went with what was already there, so that we had a comparison. But this is a good point in time to modify that. Um, and like that question about is visible in the school community, or, you know, just thinking about. And I think we take that back to the goal confirmation with how it's gonna be measured.
Cause I, I think, so, I mean, the, the goal really isn't. Are you visible? The goal is like, that they wanna know, they wanna feel heard. They wanna feel like they're supported. Like, that's what really what it's coming down to, right? It's tertiary effects of visibility, whatever, you know. Visibility is, it doesn't mean like you're physically in the school and, oh, I saw him, I saw him. Um, and maybe, and maybe that's a bad thing to measure, to your point. Cause in the end, what we're trying to measure is like, the climate. How, how, you know, is, are there, are there opinions, thoughts considered? Feel considered, feel a, a part of the conversation, part of decision-making process, all those sorts of things that. Improve climate, now they're.
Right, right, right. People feel good about their workplace and then do a better job as a result.
Well, I feel like you have some data points to give you some idea of why people feel in some cases like morale isn't great. And we can trust you to figure out from all the years you've been working in this role. Like, you have some ways that you can think about to manage it. Like, I don't see my role as telling you how to manage it, but I would love to have people just. Feel better. I know it's squishy, but it feels really important, even though it might not be the most perfectly quantifiable thing.
Doubling the number of dunk tank appearances might be. Staff dunk tank maybe first. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, so.
Is it because we just don't know what the perception is or what the expectation from visibility standpoint is? And maybe the goal is then, how do we figure that out? How do we figure out what the expectation from a visibility standpoint is? Maybe, maybe the goal is to have. A staff focus group or whatever, or to figure out what, what is that expectation that's on the, like, that the second.
That's a, I mean, cause then it's a real, what is the, what is the existing? And it's gonna be multiple, but what is the, there's multiple takes on this, but what is the existing kind of cultural? You know, institutional, cultural expectation around visibility. What that means and how that works. Um, and those are super valuable dialogues they have, those ones we really, you know, love it.
Because you're gonna, what you're gonna expose is that, that not, not visibility, but other things. It's gonna be the other things that are great.
But even, even just to utilize that in like, here are the findings, this is what, like. As superintendent eval committee, here's the new, you know, newly what we're looking at, developed from. Like, I guess it, there's like a level setting piece of expectations, when it's an engaged process that is positive too. That is the pathway that happens.
So, how can we say this goal, that maybe just exclude visibility, but improve the. Administration and climate in our schools?
To work to improve the administration and climate in all of our schools to support the success and growth of our staff.
Is it ultimately, is that, can you really boil that down to climate? And that one element of climate is how do we administer the schools? But there's a lot of different pieces to climate. And so is it, who, go, please say, what are you gonna say?
It feels to me like it's morale.
Right.
And trust.
And trust and like that respect and like. Like what you said, right? Like, they wanna feel valued, they wanna feel heard, and. But if we just need like improved morale in the district, do we need to then tack on a bunch of other stuff to it?
That's what I'm saying, if it really, ultimately, it's about. One of the folk I, for me, in the year, would be around. You know, yeah, proving morale and doing that, part of that is understanding better the sources of, of concern. Some of which, some of which surface.
Focus group or like some aspect of it being.
Those are great, I like that stuff.
But I feel like it still comes down to morale.
How about to work to improve the morale in all of our schools to support the success and growth of our staff?
That's great.
That would be goal number two. The first one was strategic. Okay, and the second one is morale.
Make it rounder.
What else did people have? Well, that was basically, that, that was basically morale into it.
Leaks in just a couple of smaller ones.
And maybe we're doing that with.
Annual performance reviews, we talked about that one. Better budget process, but we.
Well, we're working on that.
Kind of said that, but. Yeah, we did make that.
Yeah, so either way, I felt like, but.
More FaceTime with staff, but I think that's kind of what we're saying is more.
Right, and then one of the tactics to improve morale, we're hypothesizing is FaceTime staff.
Modernized curriculum, I think we talked about that one.
I think that's it, isn't it?
City resources.
Well, we talked about that as far as our PR, oh, I'm sorry, community engagement committees. We're gonna, oh, I'll have to ask Paula to add that to our next agenda, because we need to appoint that committee.
Well, we gotta vote on the goals.
Well, that's true. Now, okay, so are we finished with the superintendent goals? Does everybody think? Should we vote on these now? We have five, how many people, one, two, three, we have six people here. Should we vote on the goals right now?
I feel like, on the one hand, we wanna have everybody vote, and on the other hand, I don't think we're going too far afield. From what everybody contributed already, so we could be efficient and just maybe, I don't know what I'm saying.
I, I would just say, my only pause for reading would be more of the measurement piece. You mean, do you wanna add, I guess it's just broad goals, and then maybe the superintendent eval committee.
I don't think we'll have a certain measure of it, okay. Cause, because to your point, we have measurements now, but maybe they're not good measures, and then we change them. Then how we're gonna put that in the goal and say, improve by flexible points.
I would, but I would say though, that we previously had modified our superintendent eval to include evaluation on the goals. And so I would just wanna, can, e- either that we have consensus that we don't do that at all. Or we have another conversation about it after adopting the laws, which I think is probably more.
Could we revisit that once the evaluation committee is?
I love the city evaluation committee to have some.
I agree with you, I'd love to see that specificity of what are, how are we gonna manage the goals in advance. But if it goes back to the committee and then the committee makes a proposal for how to do that, would that be?
That sounds good.
But I, yeah, I would like.
We can try.
If we could sit down, committee and I sit down. I think we could really.
It might be orders of go over the eval first, and then maybe talk about. In a non-public, when we get everything compiled.
And the only thing I'm wondering with the strategic plan goal, is it does feel like there might necessarily be some tweaks. Just based on some of the personnel shifts, especially around curriculum, so I wanna make sure if we're setting a goal, that we're clear about. Like, what are your goalposts? And I know that's already being worked on, but I feel like we should just be transparent about that when we're setting the goals.
And I would say soon, our goal would be soon to come back to you and say specifically, here's how we're working. I mean, the biggest area that's gonna be affected is, is, uh, is goal one. So here's what, here's what's happening in relation to goal one.
And you make quarterly reports to the board about the strategic plan, correct? So we'll continue to that. Okay, well, shall we vote on these?
Well, I guess for now, pause, right?
Or should we wait?
What we said.
Well, I was kinda going both ways, for somebody else.
I think we vote, and then the measurement piece is turf two. Unless there's more measurement, just. Let's, let's vote.
You know, so basically, we're not sure what the measurements are, but we like. And I, I think that's.
One other question for the superintendent, well, I know the strategic plan, we already had baked in a quarterly report, would there be some sort of quarterly readup? On this sort of morale and other one as well, like, right?
I would like. I don't know how you're doing. It's gonna be hard.
I don't either, but that's why I'm asking the question. Before we kind of quarterly. Forget what it was before, this communications, and there was some sort of quarterly.
Yeah, they should be clipper for a train.
And I feel like that one was squishy, it was kind of like the more anecdotal, these are things that are happening, it wasn't quantifiable.
Maybe we.
Like, you could adopt the goal, but ask for Hattie to do a little more about the culture piece. So we can understand if there's an opportunity there, because that's already done. Like the cert, that. Yeah, okay. Just an idea. Do you wanna add to that goal and make reports to the board periodically? Or as needed, or do we wanna? Just assume that the superintendent will make reports to us as he feels necessary. Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Every Sunday.
See, quarterly also just good insights, we're not getting to the end of the year and then wondering. Yeah, you know, where it went.
All right, do you wanna add that then, to make what's orderly? Okay, does that satisfy you, Carrie? You know, sort of, no, I'm just asking, I want you to be happy about it. Okay, do we have a motion? Can we do them all at once, or should we do school board goals?
Motion to pass a lot of it.
On a single reading. Goal number one for the school board is foster a collaborative relationship with the city council and administrators. To enhance relations, maintain school board autonomy, and ensure compliance with app full, applicable laws. The regular meetings between the city council and the school board. And the note, the goal number two, establish a community engagement committee to foster stronger relationships with all community members of Portsmouth. With, um, a note that Brian put in here.
Well, those are just our discussion notes.
Oh, okay, so you're not gonna put that in the goals, okay. And goal number three, continue to support the implement, implementation of the strategic plan. Superintendent goals, number one, adhering to the timeline of the strategic plan. And number two, to work to improve the morale in all of our schools to support the success and growth of our staff.
And put a note. Quarterly.
In a note recorded quarterly. So do we have a motion to assert all those schools, goals? Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, before we adjourn, we have to set a meeting with, uh, to discuss that paragraph. Hopefully it will be a brief meeting.
We have to reopen.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Quick question. Um, in terms of G C O, when what we were talking about from a value standpoint, and the fact that we have not met that for a very long. We need to, we actually put that into. It's a sure requirement to be adjusted. No, it's, it's requirements in this policy.
What is that again?
The L C G C O states that the superintendent will call all calls, all professional staff to be evaluated as a basis for contract recommendations. The principal or administration, D S B, will conduct the evaluations. The evaluation should occur at least once in, once per year, but they occur more than once per year. Superintendent will determine, determine if additional evaluations are necessary. I won't go on, there's more to it, but. It's part of what we were talking about before, and it seems like we need to address it.
That's our school board policy, correct? I'll have to talk about it in the policy committee meeting, I guess.
Yeah, and it could be something, I mean, based on the fact, has not been practiced. Long as, yeah, time can tell. Uh, I mean, multiple meetings have come. Uh, that also could be grounds when you do deal with the situation, we have terminated somebody, where someone's like, well, you haven't followed your own policy and. You can't, you know. You can't ask me to leave. So I would suggest that you do wanna adjust that.
We took out like that Danielson as the specific mechanism for review, that's right. Left reviews in the contract.
At least I human myself.
Uh, is that a policy?
Um, I, I think it's worth having a quick conversation with policy, just saying, this is, you know. The district has not adhered to this policy for decades, so it would be wise to adjust the policy to. To not create a standard that we're running up to at the moment.
Thank you.
Again, we should return to it, it's a good point.
All right, we will reopen the public comment session. C N L will close the public comment session. Now, before we adjourn, can we pick a date for just one more meeting? To talk.
Really pushing it, yes, I know, I'm really pushing.
Recommend the second? September second, yes, that would be good. Is that good for people, September second? It's the, um. Tuesdays, September second. It should be, well, I don't know, I'm assuming it's a brief meeting, but it might not be. Is that good? Okay, do you wanna do six thirty again? Is six thirty better for people than seven? Is seven better for you?
You don't, I mean, I'll do my best, but taking it day by day right now.
Okay. Okay, let's say six thirty on September second. If I find out. Well, we have this new language that the city is suggesting, so we have to vote on whether we, like, their language or the paragraph that we submitted.
So, just to be clear, and all that stuff, I just wanna make sure, so, so the, you know, the voting. Your voting is not part of their formal process of creating your ordinance, so they would, I, I'm not clear. You were, you were at the meeting about what they, they want you to consider it, they want you to weigh in, I can't, but but just to be clear, this is not part of their formal processes of you confirming or or being against and voting to be against, it's not part of their formal process. I think what they're hoping for is that there'll be something that comes out of you that says, you're right.
They don't normally change shit on third.
Third read, their final read, I think this is correct, but I'll, and I will apologize if I'm wrong, and Nancy, you said this is your experience in the council. The final read is not a place where there is typically any, uh, potential editing. It is just the final read.
If they agree, if, let's say, we go to them and say, we like, I, we still like our paragraph better than your paragraph. Then if the, if the majority of them say, we agree with you, we'll go with the paragraph you guys have. Then I believe it goes back to a second reading and then they have to do a third reading after that.
And they did talk about. They can have more reads, yeah, they can have, they just couldn't finalize on the night of the third.
Right, so it can't, our influence could change. But it might not change. Right, well, yeah. So, but I didn't feel comfortable saying to them, oh, this paragraph is great. Because I said, I can't speak for the board, I'm only one of nine, just like you're all just one of nine. So I said, I have to go back to my board, so, um, that's how I looked. So, so we're done. Yeah, we did.
You can see the person that came up and speak.
Can we have a motion to adjourn? First, second, all in favor?
We got new, uh, new teacher orientation tomorrow morning, so we gotta.
The board has been very.